I'd like to make this two flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is that yours?
No, that's her.
No, that's.
What is this for?
Presentation.
Oh, so this is something that's for us.
Why is this thing?
Row call please. It's to the top of the presentation.
Alexander.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Cuman.
Yes.
Lentine.
Here.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
O'Toole.
Yes.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Alexander.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Cuman.
Yes.
Lentine.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
O'Toole.
Yes.
We'll move to reports. Mayor, you have anything to report today?
Yes, our City Edition Newsletter has gone to the printer and it should be mailed by early next week. And it hopefully will be also available on our website this weekend.
Some emails. I'd be happy to put it up.
Just if they can do that for you. I guess we also want to highlight that we do have a new resident document that's in the final form and by the end of the week it should be online in the City Hall.
Okay.
And again, I'm happy to report that the YMC is effectively managing the pool and we're going forward. We've got some new programs and a lot of kids being trained in how to swim. And we hope for even better weather. We've had some rain and some gloomy weather at times, but I'm sure we're going to have heat and 90s and 100 degree weather later this summer. That's all and I'll be glad to comment as we go along.
Thank you. We'll move on to Fire Chief Mark Newman.
Thank you, Council President Henry, Mayor Roach, and members of council, members of the community. Just a couple of things this evening. Yesterday, we gave our Heart Saver CPR AED course. Three of our citizens attended the training and were certified in CPR. Division of Fire is also hosting CPR class for our Richmond Heights cert team at their next regular meeting, which is on Monday, July 20. The next class for the citizens will be held in August with a date to be determined. Class size is limited to 12 students per class. We offer them bi-monthly and they are free to residents of Richmond Heights. Anybody that's interested in one of these classes can call me in my office at (216) 383-6304. Division of Fire received notification today that the Ohio Department of Public Safety has awarded us a training and equipment grant for the 2015-2016 fiscal year. The award amount is $3,500 and this grant will go towards funding, training, and equipment for emergency medical services. This grant's been very helpful throughout the years. We were awarded last year as well an amount of $2750, which we expended the entire amount. And that helped by the oxygen cylinder lift that council approved a couple of weeks ago. One last item. Richmond Heights Division of Fire began their annual pre-fire planning activity, so local businesses will see the firefighters out and about making site visits. We started this activity on June 1st and will run this activity through the summer concluding around August 28th. Firefighters visit the local establishments in the community to make sure that their pre-incident action plans are up to date and they have lock boxes and alarm systems and everything that's necessary. That concludes my report for this evening. If there's any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
Thank you. We'll move to Chief Rowe.
Thank you, Madam President, Mayor Roach, members of council, and residents of the community. Police activity so far this year compared to last year is remarkably close. I think the only significant differences are a 79% reduction in the number of burglaries compared to last year. Last year at this time, we'd had 47. This year, we've had 10. The other item is our arrests for some reason are up by about 7%. Our citations as far as parking enforcement and traffic enforcement are up 8.7% compared to last year. And fines and costs, I should say fines from Lynn Hurst Court are up 19%, just under $7,000. Our overtime is down 9% and awarded time is also down 20.5%. The mall accounts for approximately 5.7% of our calls for service and 16% of our arrests and our three major apartment complexes account for 19.4% of our calls for service. And that's all I have.
Thank you. We'll move to Building Commissioner Phil Siegel.
Thank you, Madam President, Mayor Roach, and members of council and citizens. My brief report tonight involves the grass maintenance program. We've contacted approximately 200 residents to date regarding the condition of their properties, having to cut only 13 ourselves so far. There has been one small glitch in the program that I will be asking for some correction from, from council probably at their next meeting. The program was originally intended to be split between two contractors and council was, council approved two ordinances for the mayor to sign contracts to two contractors in the amount of $3,000 each. Only one of those contractors has really agreed to their contract so far and as a result of that, the $3,000 that was earmarked for the second contractor, we will request council to reassign that to the first contractor. The one that we've been using is Hollywood Scapes. They've been doing a very nice job. All of the properties that have been cut look very nice and we hope to keep up that work. There's only three or four more that need to be cut in the near future, so we've had good compliance and I think the program has been a success. So probably also in the next couple of weeks, we will be filing papers at the Recorder's Office to ensure that we get reimbursed for the money that we're spending and we will be seeing to that detail also. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes?
Question for our building commissioner. I noticed the house on Highland Road that is earmarked to be demolished.
Yes.
That lawn was only cut halfway. The front yard was, half of it was cut and it wasn't the width. It was almost right down the middle. One side's cut, the other side is like four feet wide.
I think that the neighbor cut the portion that was cut. We've been hesitant to cut that because we know that the property is going to be demolished and the property already has about $50,000 worth of tax liens, which is about three times what the property will be worth once the, once the structure's gone. So any money that we, any expenses that we incur, we are very unlikely to recover.
I was just curious.
So I will discuss that property with the Service Director and see if there's anything we can do maybe with our own forces to make it look a little bit better. But we've hesitated to cut, to use our limited funds to cut that property because I know that we're never going to recover whatever we spend on that property.
Thank you.
We will move to Finance Director Mitch Holm.
Thank you, Madam President, Mayor Roach, members of council and residents. I'll be brief because I imagine you're probably pretty sick of hearing me drone on tonight. So I'll keep it to, I'll keep it to one item and essentially I wanted to discuss the staffing issue in the Finance Department. As I said last meeting, we did identify an individual for the accounts payable and receivable position. Unfortunately, the person who we had identified had a change in personal circumstances which does not allow them to come onboard with the city, so we're kind of back to square one with that. But I will keep you updated as we go. We are maintaining keeping people paid, taking a bit of extra effort, but we are diligently looking to fill both positions at this point and I will keep you posted as, as things go along. And that's my report for this evening.
Thank you. Service Director Donald Krasinski.
Thank you, Madam President. Last meeting at the Finance Committee, I'd be grateful to see some pictures and concrete work that our guys have done on the streets that went quite a few large patches and part of the morning, just two guys finished those off. And that is one of the public recognition to building crews in your service department who did such a fine job over there on Charlotte Road, Carl, Nick, Tim, Aris, there's some of our park drivers who do the packaging. And also the two mechanics that were there that put their gloves down, they put them up the stand so they could finish them off right away and just keep them going and finish that job in a very timely manner. I'd like to also just say that some of the all employees, because they're doing a great job with the weather, the conditions that the capital work under, the grass coverage been tremendous and how to keep up with the weather and spend to do the pre-predating that we've recently been going around and find, find a way to save for that. But they're doing an excellent job with some of the conditions that we've been wanting to get done lately. The other thing that I want to show you is that when I came here, I noticed the government on the service department, they're saying that we should have a service department. I personally didn't wait much long. It was hard to even see what it was. And I think that the residents need to know who we are more, who we're on the streets. Because they're always asking, there are people out there doing things and they're asking what's going on. And so I thought it would be nice to design another logo for the service department. So I gave it to one of my guys at the garage, Carl. He has an artistic ability, he draws faces and pictures and all that. So I said, why don't you give us some remnants of what the service department is trying to look like for the side of the depot. Well, he put a couple of things together. We handed them off to a sign company that generously donated their time to kind of give us a little more engagement on it. And I'd like to present this to the city. I might put this on the side of our place.
I like it.
We have some nice white trucks now, pickup trucks.
I think people in the back want to see it. It's beautiful.
And I think this, this would be a nice thing to add to the service department. Kind of shows everything we do.
What size would you suggest it be on a truck?
Well, the size is not by the ounce, but the size of that thing.
Wow, really?
And it's hard to see what it gets. This size or bigger, a little bit bigger than you find, I'll just find a measurement on it, but it'll fit nice here on the side of the front door and maybe have a good car that we are serving. Back on the seat.
Thank you. That's good. It looks great.
Madam President.
Yes?
Mayor, Ward 1 thanks you too. For the patching over there. Appreciate that.
We'll go to City Engineer Lee Courtney.
Do I have to, Madam President, because we have a variety of water complaints, fortunately a lot of them are serious and the way it's been rated, that's really different. So maybe some of the work that's been done over the years is showing results. And the second thing is if anybody was in fire, there's tree clearing going down on the high power lines, right behind, by north of the fire, if we go back and if you, which is a good thing because there's matches on those lines, you don't have to be in there.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
May I ask the council to find the many of the recorders that are in the service that are hiding from sneaking?
If you need to dispel a little bit of time, you get the information about if the towns called us, if the town is a city.
Nice to see it. Those are substantial.
Especially for last night because I'll tell you, the retention bases, they're a lot of water and so they're doing.
Thank you. We'll move to Recreation Director Jessica Giff.
Thank you, Madam President. One thing that's exciting about Recreation Center is we're going to be launching a new social program for all of our residents here in Richmond Heights. It is called the Lunchtime and it is primarily a social program for residents. It is going to be the first Thursday of every month, starting on Wednesday, March 30th in August. And basically at 1:00 o'clock, we organize lunch for the residents of our community to live together, play games, listen to songs, have some fun. And we have new residents that are coming to try and stuff. This was made in an effort to kind of create some of the project, you know, for the residents to do very quickly. So it's a weekly writing in August and it's a 12-month program, but each is a month to the next calendar year. We send the residents to the registration. $12 registration. It's on the grid. It's affordable. So.
So where does the cuisine come from?
We're going to be sending it to the local restaurant.
Send them.
Yeah, so they're actually going to be able to go out and bring it to the restaurant. Some are the firehouse, the pull-off, Brian Burger, La Caca Baritas.
So they'll have to pay for the lunch once they get there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah, they have to. The city doesn't pay for lunch.
So there's a little catch to that.
There is a catch, yeah. You have to order your own lunch.
We were saying, no, you're up until then.
This will hopefully get a little bit conscious of her, her customers too, but I think it's starting, you know, I guess, in a restaurant with the recreation department. But you do have to pay for that.
Great detail.
Yes. And that's America's City Edition. As represented by President, I'll be able to get any insurance for residents for the next week. We don't have the usual.
Can I have the information on this lunch bunch also? Make sure it gets on the homepage, Kelly.
And finally, I just wanted to remind everyone, our residents, that Greenwood's 300th Jumping, which one, Community Garage, they'll crash it, they'll take it place on July 11th. You guys start at 9:00 a.m. and 3:30 and you can still rent space for $30. You can contact Greenwood Farms if you have any other registration questions. You can actually register through the Recreation Center and you can have all that information. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much. Economic Director, Development Director, Crystal Best.
Thank you, Madam President, Mayor, members of council and community. I just got a couple of ideas to be made. I'm pleased to say that we are going to be meeting with the mall management and the mall marketing director as well as the council board, because I know, hearing different comments from a lot of the citizens, what is, how people are doing, we're making all the time people are trying to get them involved in the, in the future of the mall and that kind of, so this will be probably in the first time that we have a meeting and hopefully it will be, it's momentous, it'll come to my idea to engage that people a little bit more in the, in the vitality of the mall. And then in July, the mayor and I will have a chance to meet with the making board, I don't know what's going on with making and stuff there. So keeping, keeping up with what's happening with the mall, I'll definitely let you know who's out here or anything new. Also, in regard to the gas station at 26102 Highland, I mean Highland, Charlotte Road, we are going to be forward with the, called the APA. The APA is the Analysis of Brownfield's Clean Up Activities and also is the Media Action Plan. Both of those activities have to be made public. So I'm saying it now in this meeting to let you know that in the next few weeks or so, the APA document will be made available here. The mall will probably also put a copy of it at the library and we can post it one online once we get that started. We're going also, probably we have to have a couple of community meetings where communities can actually come and comment on what we're planning on doing. Again, that's the Fire Department, Ohio VTA, so I wanted to make sure that I mentioned in this meeting so that we are keeping track of how often we measure and publish forms and as soon as I have the actual document, I will also say where it's going to be posted. In addition, we are going to have to put a sign up at the gas station, which will actually be listed, saying that we are using from Ohio VTA money to mediate that sub, so that we can, we can, we can actually, you know. As far as, oh, Green Farm, Jessica and I have a chance to meet with the president of Green Farm, Fred Bash, about possibilities to generate money and go after a type of county cultural and art grant. So we are going to be working with him on that from a reservation standpoint and a community development standpoint. So hopefully that'll be the start of a, maybe possibly go after grants for activities cultural, art activities right there. And then lastly, Councilman Remy Duvain, in speaking with commissioner people earlier today, we did find out that the notices to demolish went out from a mall at Everfield on the 17th. Now that the notices have gone out, or the notice went out relative to that Highland Road property, we can get the notice received, signed by the mayor, look at the actual letters, copy of the letters as a attachment. We get that over to Land Bank, the Land Bank, get that on their list to actually demolish that property.
And in what kind of time are we talking?
Well, I commit the.
When is the bulldozer going to show up?
Well, I, I know from our standpoint, I commit those, that letter over to the Land Bank before the end of this week, probably tomorrow. And then I just have to find out when on the Land Bank list of properties, when that home will be scheduled.
Scheduled.
And I know they've got some outrageous number of properties that are demolished, but as soon as I know I'm here.
Would they be doing the other home also that's across the street? I mean, it's the yellow home near the park.
Yeah, but both those sheets can go out to the Land Bank at the same time because the mall has to deal with that, the notice to demolish out on 17th and now we can see what's the Land Bank, the Land Bank is scheduled.
It's exciting. Can't wait.
So, I mean, and I know that's part of it, I saw that my girlfriend, she worked for this.
Create this thing out of this.
And that's.
Thank you. We will move to the audience. Do we have any comments from the audience? Yes, thank you. Will you state your name and address, please, for the?
Is there any about the future of creating, of, 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 Over $160? Our attorney says it's over $160 a year for that service. Okay. Thank you, and I appreciate that too. Believe me, we, we all ask that question each time because those cans do look really good. But one other thing is, is that for seniors and, and people who are sick, it's hard for them to pull that can. For me, I had to go and pull my mother's can out because she was sick. And I never thought about, you know, a plastic can, you know, being an issue before until you have to go pull somebody else's can who lives in another neighborhood. So, some seniors can't even pull those cans to the street.
You know what the other downside on that is, and I've talked to some residents outside the community, other people that have this, they do not, they're not able to house those in their garage.
No, they have the outside garage.
And so, now you're looking at these garbage cans for your neighbor. I, I understand your point and, and it would be great to have that housed and.
Right, they're always outside.
But they're always outside, they're in front of the garage and a lot of people don't like.
Pardon me? You put yours here. We won't report you. Okay. All right. Thank you for your comments. All right, we'll move to the new business. Oh, well, old business, there, there is none. Right. Right.
A new business, Resolution 56, 2015, introduced by Lenteen, first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a purchase agreement with Hall Public Safety Company for an emergency response equipment package for the Division of Fire and declaring an emergency.
Oh, any comments? Mr. Lenteen?
Yes, Madam Chairman. As, as we all know, the city has purchased a new vehicle for the fire chief and the fire department also acting as a backup. We've already bought the vehicle. This is now going to equip it with the necessary radios, sirens, lights, and, and all that type of equipment. And it is the recommendation of the safety committee for passage of Resolution Number 56, 2015.
Move for suspension.
Second.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Lenteen?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Lenteen?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Resolution 57, 2015 passes unanimously.
One additional thing, Madam President?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we authorize Chief Rowe and the Director of Finance to enter into a renewal contract with Stephen Campbell and Associates for place and fire departments call logger maintenance.
Second in motion.
Is there a cost?
It costs, not to receive, $2,600.
Is there a fund for that or a fund?
Chief, that's coming out of the contracts fund for.
Yes.
Thank you. Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Lenteen?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Lenteen?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Lenteen?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Resolution 57, 2015 passes unanimously.
Resolution Number 58, 2015, introduced by Mayor Roach, first reading. A resolution appointing, reappointing Fred Cash to the Greenwood Farm Historical, Cultural, and Arts Association Board of Directors.
Mayor, do you have comments?
Yes, this, this would be a, actually a council appointment for this position. Fred is now the president of the organization and has volunteered his time over many years and this is a reappointment, so I would recommend that the council pass this.
Move for suspension.
Second.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Lenteen?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Resolution 58, 2015 passes unanimously.
One additional thing, Madam President?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we authorize Chief Rowe and the Director of Finance to enter into a renewal contract with Stephen Campbell and Associates for place and fire departments call logger maintenance.
Second in motion.
Is there a cost?
It costs, not to receive, $2,600.
Is there a fund for that or a fund?
Chief, that's coming out of the contracts fund for.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alexander?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Cuman?
Yes.
Lenteen?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Anything else? Oh, one more piece of correspondence as an addition.
Dear Mayor Roach and City Council, thank you so much for honoring me with proclamation on the occasion of my 95th birthday that added to the joy of my large family gathering. Sincerely, Mary Elizabeth Ellis.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I move on to the summary? I guess we can adjourn.
We can adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Meeting adjourned.